To citizen. I'm gonna rearrange this schedule a little bit because on the agenda.
Sure.
I'm gonna open it up to citizens comments. There's anybody that has anything that they'd like to say at this moment. That'll be anybody in line, anybody in house. Have anything to say before we get going? Um, we're gonna start with the middle school if that's okay?
Yeah.
Just, just, just getting, his kids are just getting here, so.
Yeah, we'll let them get settled.
Yep.
That works for you?
Yep, that works for me.
So, um, I've been in Miss, Mrs. O'Neill's, uh, science class since quite a bit this school year. And, uh, we had more students that were hoping to be here, but we've had middle school basketball tournament, so they.
Oh, that's right, that's.
They're running late and, uh, they, because they won yesterday, so.
Oh, nice.
That's pretty cool. But, uh, what they've been doing with ecology and, uh, dioramas and such, I'm gonna turn over to Miss O'Neill.
You want to talk to me anything?
Go ahead.
I think that, oh, that might, if it's not, it's a little light on. Yep.
Hi, I'm, I go by Mrs. Dan in the classroom. This is Sarah who very bravely decided, kind of help me, um, carry all the things and not get subway by the basketball fervor. Um, so we're doing our ecology unit and we brought a couple of projects to show you. Um, the first one we started back in October, uh, and these are. A fully enclosed ecosystem terrariums, um, based off the local ecosystem that we forged on campus for. Um, and all of the jars were, you know, either brought in by the kids or scavenged from the recycling in my neighborhood, um, or donated by the community. Um, same with our boxes. We've moved on to biomes and biospheres as we worked up our levels of organization and these guys are. Set up to reflect a biome where you look into the hole and it's just a window into the world. Um, and we'll leave these around so that you can explore them at your leisure. But some of them turned out really cool and I've been super impressed with the kids who, who don't try on, on most things, who have just like given this their all, um, and. Yeah, some of them were turning out really awesome. And so we're partnering with the elementary school to, um, have some of the younger students come and do a little walk through zoo. So that, um, the eighth graders have a chance to explain what they built and why it's important and, um, you know, why they chose that particular part of their food web. Cause I found it leads to a lot more retention if they can explain it to somebody else and, and little kids are much less judging them. Um, and then Sarah was gonna show us the project that she's currently working on. Um, we're covering a non-native species, both, um, like non-native and innocuous, the non-native invasive to the New Hampshire area.
So I get the zebra mussel and the two-line salamander. The zebra mussel is the invasive non-native species and the two-line salamander is the non-native species. Well, most of these drawings are hand, like, hand done and the only thing that isn't is a map down there.
So it just shows the distribution from the original space where, um, they were, the organism evolved to how it spread and what we're doing to help control some of that. Um, and then Sarah, the ecosystem is currently in hibernation because it's winter. Um, but we're recovering from, um, our next stage with these is recovering from a sudden catastrophe. So we've had, like, uh, hers got sat on a bench, so it cooked a little bit, uh, and then we've got. This guy, um, weird, he was just walking and bumped into a friend and it went rolling on the ground, um, so we had an earthquake simulation. And that, that's teaching us the levels of succession as they can come back and reestablish it. And we're testing these and doing our observations every week. This one I brought in because we pulled these, um, little dyke coat seedlings right out of the snow. They were just like bright red sticking through the snow because, um, chlorine fell in the leaves. When it's red, um, converts the sun's energy directly into heat. And as soon as we brought it inside where it wasn't having to fight its way through the snow, all of the leaves turned green. And that happened like within three days and to see like, like I can do a slideshow and walk through the notes on why this is important, but. You pull it out of the ground and like get to see it happen and it leads to a little bit more attention, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
I know non-native, tell me what non-invasive.
Non-invasive, it means like it's not native to the area and also affects other organisms in that area. But the zebra mussel, for example, it's in the reef where a lot of all the mussels are. And it filters out all the algae that all the other mussels need to survive and then those die out and then it's just zebra mussels in the area.
So you have species that come into the region that are like not from there, but aren't doing any, any actual harm. And then the species that are competing for resources and fighting for their nation, taking out the rest of the system. And I was able to show them a, a dissection of a lionfish that my husband and I lived in the Florida Keys recently. Um, that I did where we, we laid out all thirty-seven fish that were inside the other lionfish, so you could see like full digression, which, yeah.
That is cool.
Uh, do we have any other questions?
I will say, any given day, you can see kids bringing in plants and all of this, especially in the.
Oh, I have a TikTok hashtag about bragging on their ecosystem.
Well, fall, it's great to have, we had students all over campus, right? But you were always outside our office causing distractions for me. Every seven minutes, I gotta go water on it anyway, so.
Yeah, well, these are here for you guys to explore your lessons.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Well, that is a tough act to follow. I think our fifth grade students and, and siblings are here today will wow you with their idea. They wow me with it, I'll get blue one day. So, um, Samara DeWeaver is here and Rihanna Sedanowitz is here. They're the co-authors and, uh, Raymond Wooters is here and Ryder DeWeaver is here and their parents. So, um, Samara has volunteered to actually do the reading of the letter. So wanna stand up and come towards the microphones so that we can hear you nice and loud? Free, you wanna give her some moral support?
Dear reader, we would like to change the school days to Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. The rest of the school days are our weekend. We want this because we think that teachers work too long. They also work long hours at home. Second, stop standardized testing, please, except for math testing. We want to add writing to math testing. Third, change the school hours to seven AM to four PM, including morning program, after-school program, stays until seven PM. Finally, increase art to two times a week as another special. Thank you very much, everyone. You will appreciate. You guys have a clear week. Samara DeWeaver and Rihanna Sedanowitz.
Can you, I have a question. Can you tell me how you came up with some of these ideas, like why?
It all started off with a joke, um, at one. And then we actually asked Mr. Morgan and then he was like.
So I said, write it up.
Yeah.
So you guys did, right? And then we edited it a little bit and presented it. Tell them about, uh, the standardized testing part.
Well, some teachers have stuff like they didn't want to do it anymore.
Oh, the teachers put you up to that?
So, no, it sounds like a few representatives listening to their constituents. And then lobbying on their behalf as part of their proposal. That's government.
Right, yeah.
That's really well done.
Good job.
Wait, do you wanna start this next week or a new week out?
How about this week?
There's a couple of things that I don't think we'll be able to implement. Mainly because of legislature in the New Hampshire, in the state of New Hampshire that we have to follow.
And union contracts.
Yeah, and union contracts and whatnot. Um, the three days a week sounds great, but it wouldn't give us enough days that we're required to have kids in school for the year. Standardized testing, I think we all think it would be great to get rid of that. Un- unfortunately, we don't have any say on that either. Changing the school hours, um, is interesting. Can you tell me why seven to four? So you're thinking about maybe changing it to hours versus days for the school year, which.
Okay.
Which might work.
And they didn't know about the requirements from the state, so that was a great thought.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's.
So can I ask this question? Uh, so schools have to be in session so many hours a day and so many days a year or a combination thereof. What I'm wondering is if, what if you still had to go to school five days a week? Would you still wanna come earlier and get out a little bit earlier? Would that, would that be something that would be helpful too, even if it were five days a week? Cause I heard seven and that kind of perked my ears a little, just out of curiosity. That's all, not that I'm.
I know, yes.
And me and four days will be better than five.
Well, if they go to hours and you could track the hours and that's always a discussion we have during negotiations and whatnot, yeah.
Well, we'll definitely take it under advisement and I thank you for bringing it to the board.
Yeah, and, and I would just like to say, I, I like that you, you know, were concerned that teachers work all long hours at home. That is a hundred million percent true, so thank you for being concerned that they're, you know, working a lot of extra hours and trying to help out with that. That was very kind of you. Yeah.
Any other questions? Nope, thank you very much. Oh, go ahead, Teresa, sure.
I love the idea that you guys brought up hours because you guys are in fifth grade and today in our sixth grade class. They mentioned how interesting it would be if we flipped off the schedule. So the elementary school went earlier and the high school went a little bit later. So I think it's interesting that you guys are all having kind of a similar conversations.
And, and other districts in the area do that, so, yeah. I wonder why, like.
Well, because we were getting in the car.
Well, I wonder why everybody, you know, all of a sudden, like, it's on their minds, yeah.
Kids are talking.
Yeah, well, and, and the study show, it's better, high school kids, yeah.
Logistics issue or a, um, a community cultural issue. Where you've just gotten used to the older students getting out first to be there to have younger students on the bus and be careful of them.
Yeah.
Three years with like four to nine. So they wanna go to school.
Four PM?
To nine PM? Okay.
We'll be like, give European countries and Mexico.
We want Joe and Justin are like, we can do four AM, cause you guys are.
You guys are early on.
Probably still on my way here.
Yeah, born meaning nicer past Joe's bed time, generally, right?
Great job, thank you very much.
Thank you, the parents for bringing that.
Yes, thank you.
Good job, girl.
Oh, good job.
Thank you so much.
You know, it's interesting, if there's a bill, what, we're gonna just wait through, it's probably not gonna go anywhere, about a four-day work week in the state.
See, if they do it, we can do it.
I don't know. I don't know, I don't know how it's written, but yeah.
I really, teachers really do love the four days.
Yeah, your part-time superintendent loves the three-day work. Three days here.
Right.
But only if we travel crazy.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
All right. So the manifest is going around, if everybody hasn't gotten that. We need to approve the minutes for January tenth, public and non-public, January twenty-second, public and non-public. Uh, January twenty-fourth, public and non-public. And January twenty-ninth, public and non-public, and February fifth, public.
That's the package.
We, we met a lot.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve that slated minutes second.
All those in favor? Discussion, sorry, discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, on January tenth. The non-public, so it's like going to read the fourth page in. Well, where we're talking about the Winchester, um, it says about discussions with SAU twenty-nine. It's the Keene, uh, school board. SEU twenty-nine and Keene are two distinct entities. So, yeah, we, and we've done that before, so we just have to really make sure we use the right language, it's not SAU twenty-four. And then, do you wanna, uh, we did the whole slate, so don't we, I have scratches on the column or some, yeah, whatever.
Go for it.
It's back further than, so. Yeah. Oh, okay, so we're, um, January twenty-ninth, uh, non-public. So I'm sorry, I didn't count pages, but. So at the bottom, the, this budget planning discussion where we talked about, um, you know, options. We, um, the board took votes on all of those suggested items and any votes taken by the board needs to be, um, reflected in the minutes, so need to be recorded in the minutes. So I would say where we went around and asked the administration their thoughts, those weren't like official votes, but, um, so I would just think that those need to be, um.
I have those in.
Yeah, those in or else, uh, pare down the, that handout. But, um, the, and the only piece with that handout that we, that Maria did for us after we voted. We would just need to redact, there's a one where it mentions a person's name. Uh, we would just have to redact that, so just be, you know, careful to redact that one. Oh, two of them, actually two of them mentioned a name tied to a position, but, um, so just watch out for that.
And, yes, what, what's the change for the, I'm sorry.
Oh, so the, when we went around and we did the votes on all the decreases, yeah, so it just needs to be added to the notes.
Yeah, and just the board votes. It was this grid, it's a.
Yeah, oh, you wanted that in the notes.
All board votes.
Yeah, cause we voted on it.
Minutes, yeah, and since they were board votes, I mean, we didn't vote, we didn't do motion second floor, but they were still board votes. And. Well, I'm gonna stick it, but I'll hit it later. That's it.
That's the last one?
Yep.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Student board member, anything? From him or any word?
Nothing that I can talk about in public.
Okay.
I have some, some information for Mr. Barth that I'm sharing.
Okay. Uh, so superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. It's nice to see you going. Happy Valentine's Day. We're all here together. You, you have my report. I added some photos this time that, uh, um, Thompson took that I wanted to include regarding the AP breakfast that we had. It was a pretty fun, we had a fun time. I think the kids had a little bit of time, but a lot of students asked a lot of really great questions and really good conversations. I mean, majority of us were there, some AP teachers were there, we had pals were there, we had, uh, a few other support staff there. Really just being available to listen to students' questions and kind of encourage them to really take a hard look at the AP courses that we wanted to offer. Dig into the overviews that we provided. Um, and, and then that evening was the course selection information night that I know, uh, Mr. Barth and some staff were, you know, kind of closing some gaps for some parents. So now the course selection is underway. Um, we're hopeful that we'll see the interest in the AP courses as we're moving forward, so we can expand offerings. Expand opportunities for students, but also provide the supports that they'll need. I mean, we're very clear, these are challenging courses, but you're going to have support here in order to help to get through it. That includes doing your summer work, because there is summer work and that's when we got the loudest groans. And, uh, but they, uh, all, overall, I think we had about thirty-five students and, uh, it was really well done. And thank you to every group for, you know, putting on a breakfast that was really easy and good and the kids loved it, but, uh.
Chase had two plates.
And then he went.
Make sure to tell me.
I'm so glad he was there. Um, an update on, on the Cheshire Career Center at Keene High School. Uh, we are working with them on ensuring we have spots for our second-year automotive students. We do have two students who would need to take electrical two, so we would already look to tuition them back to, um, Brattleboro for their second year. Because they don't offer electrical two yet in Keene, they're starting their electrical program.
It was my only like, oh, was that we weren't gonna have that offering, so that's fantastic.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll make sure that happens. Mr. Barth has been working with Mr. Town to set up. The, um, the, the Duck and Pony Show, as we like to call it, or the Roadshow, with families to have the opportunity to come and ask questions, students to be able to come and ask questions. Right now, we're not part of their region for next year because their agreement ends next year and they'll be rewriting a new agreement. The other two superintendents, one through in that, Dr. Rappert, one from, uh, Paul Mountain, Mr. Spence. They've asked that we submit a formal proposal to join Region Thirteen. I have no argument on that, just, Rob Lea didn't have a problem with that either, and so that's what we'll do is we'll submit that proposal.
So will that hinder us sending kids for the twenty-four, twenty-five year to them, or?
If, what it does is it allows us to still enroll students, students can select courses over there. Uh, what it, the only disadvantage is by not being part of the region, we're going to be allowed to enroll in courses that have room. So the, the more popular courses, we may not have an opportunity to be a part of.
So have safe seats essentially, cause we're not in there.
Correct, and when you're part of the region, they use your percentage of enrollment in the region to determine the number of seats in each course that you're allowed to. You're guaranteed.
Right.
I don't suspect that we're going to run into, I really don't think we're gonna run into a problem next year and then the year following. We would have to have forty or fifty students that attend, if we're plus or really running into seating problems. And I don't think we're gonna have forty or fifty students at ten. If we can get a dozen students to take advantage of this next year moving forward and grow. That would absolutely be a goal. The work that Mr. Arias is doing in the seventh grade with people. Uh, the work that Mr. Thompson's doing with, uh, career planning with the LOs, work-based learning, the whole point is to have it all grow together. So, uh, so that's, that's kind of where we are, uh, with that program and, and we'll get more information from Mr. Barth and Mr. Townsend. With the settlement date, time, place. Talk to our families about wanting the opportunities that are there. I'm gonna give part A to the tutor.com info and we'll let Mr. Arias give part B. Is it short? It's not. So we've been working for quite some time to get access, get students access to tutor.com. Tutor.com is grades four to twelve tutoring free, twenty-four, seven, online. What I like about it is it's gone through a couple of iterations over the last couple of years. It's in partnership with the Department of Education here in the state. It's free for all of us. When it first came out, um, they didn't have consistent way of doing background checks of all of the tutors who were going to be online, because they're not known to us. And so a lot of school districts in the previous, we held off on having our students access it. They've come a long way with that, we guaranteed through the Department of Education their credential codes. So we now have guaranteed that everybody that our students are gonna be interacting have had background checks. Um, so then the next piece was the tech piece. How are we gonna get our kids to log on simply through a single sign-on? So we've been working at that. Justin's been working with their tech department and now part B.
Part B, uh, we finished the, you know, integration yesterday and I, as I was sitting here, uh, before the meeting started. We got the okay to make it go live, so starting tomorrow, the icon will be there for the student support as well. That they'll just do on the little portal, click on tutor.com whenever they want.
So we're gonna broadcast, thank you, Justin, we're gonna broadcast that to all of our families, so we're aware that, um, even if you're home and it's a, you know, our, our night owl. Juniors, you know, we're up at one or two and wanna try to get that thing done, but they're stuck. Um, having access to someone to help them through it. Things is, is, uh, uh, basic as just checking your math or walking through a problem. Two is reading your paper and giving you editing suggestions.
Oh, nice.
So live.
Yeah, yeah.
So really great service for our kids and that are another added advantage for install students that we're pretty excited about, and it's free. Uh, yeah, we. And I'll go one more, I'll, I'll provide one more, cause the rest is, is written in here. Um, I think Karen's gonna talk more about the SWOT. Thank you for your report, but, uh, we did meet with the teacher's leader group and provided an update on those areas in the SWOT analysis. That, uh, on, on where we feel we may, or at least have addressed the issues that have come forward through. Um, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Um, there's a lot in there that we've discussed or that we've indicated is work that's ongoing. There, as I put in the report, I didn't want the board to think that we were just making arbitrary decisions on things that have been brought to our attention without, of course, bringing them to you. That's not been the case. Everything that is we've done through the SWOT analysis is always a part of the report. Anything moving forward will be no different. So I'll save that for, for Karen to share.
Great.
Uh, other than, uh, that, I do wanna, let's ask the board, um, I just wanted the board where that my wife works in the Manchester School District. Her vacation is not next week. It is the week after, so I have submitted for three vacation days for that week after. And so I just wanted the board to feel it, but I'm, I'm always accessible, but that I won't be present.
Is Jane your designated, cause Tom used to be like Wayne's designated, so, like.
Um, yeah, we can find it up depending upon what it is that we need. Um, we have a fairly shared understanding, but anything that comes down to legal or personnel would go right to Jane. Anything that, you know, the principals can handle, certainly they can handle it, they can also work with Karen or anything that's academic. So, yeah, we have a pretty good chain of command in terms of what we're, what we're doing, so, um, doesn't mean I'm not accessible, so if something's up. It's giving me a shout. There's no expectation of privacy as far as, it's never been the case.
We tell every student that we hire, it's twenty-four, seven, but.
Yeah, so you, you know.
True. Yeah, they, yeah, they do.
Uh, so that's, that would be my report.
Thank you. Any questions for us?
I have just one question, um, when I was reading the, the, the last part about the SWOT and you were saying how, you know, you, everything, you know, not doing anything without bringing the board's attention. Was, then that's what, how I interpreted it all. Was there any comments or complaints that's, that was happening?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so, but I was like, maybe I missed it, cause I'm like, well, this is what you've been doing, okay?
Yes, I, I just want, because when we work with the teacher leader group, what we ask our teachers to do when they leave is to go, uh, spread, spread the word, right? So share, uh, what we've been talking about with teacher leader group. So they had a document with responses to it that we hadn't yet provided.
Oh.
And I just wanted to make sure that there was clear communication that whatever it was we were doing with TLG through that SWOT analysis, where it was not something that you want to do. So I just.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Ryan. You, Sportsen, Business Administrators Report.
Madam Cherry, I have my report. I'm just gonna highlight a couple of things and then look for a board action if I could. Um, the budget process is need to be closed through, hopefully. Um, we have our, our vote on the twelfth and then we have our town meeting on the sixteenth. That's gonna be a new process for me, have not done a traditional town meeting, so. Gonna learn something.
It's like, it's like deliberative, but it's the drop dead. You don't leave till you have a budget, yeah.
Um, our assistant, uh, Miriam has been, um, processing payroll, working with Gretchen. And this week's payroll went out with Miriam doing the processing and Gretchen writing shotgun. So we're doing that cross-training, which, uh, with illnesses and everything, I almost wondered if it wasn't gonna be me or someone else sitting with Miriam to finish it. So this is a good thing for, for the district so that we do have a second and a third. Cause I can pitch it if I need to, I like it, but I can do it. So anyway, that cross-training is, is going very well. Um, we're working with TD Bank to do, um, what's called positive pay. It's basically notifying the bank that a certain number of checks will be coming, so that when they do hit, they know what's gonna be coming. So it's, it's almost like, uh, if you see something that doesn't fall in there, you let us know. But if there's any exceptions, they kind of let us know if something didn't hit in the, in the batch accordingly. So, um, it's a, it's a fraud deterrent or at least another, um, building block, um, as a fraud deterrent. So, uh, Jody had started that when she was here and then with the changeover, it's been on hold. So with February kind of being a catch-up month, we're gonna get that initiated again. I've reached out to, uh, Keith Pike, uh, TD Bank, and we're gonna be working through that. The Department of Ed has approved our proposed spend-down plan. So what happens is if you have too much money at the end of the year, um, you know, of excess fund balance in your food service account. You have to do a required spend-down because it can only be three, three months, um, worth of your typical budget. So say our budget's two hundred and twenty-five, three times, or, you know, thirty percent of that is what we can spend down. Uh, or we can retain, everything else has to be spent down. So in your packet, you will see there. So in your packet, you will see there are, um, three quotes for, um, two new dishwashers. So as part of our spend-down, um, rather than going to the board first, I wanted to get approval from the state because I couldn't do anything without the state's approval. And it's been two and a half months, but we finally got her approval. Um, and so what you see before you is for, um, a high school dishwasher and the, um, uh, elementary dishwasher. There are two different types. And, uh, we received three quotes for the high school one, but only two quotes, um, a third we were unable to get toward these elementary school. And we are looking to have the board, um, accept the bids, um, or quotes from central restaurant products as both of those quotes came in at the lowest limit. Um, so in order for us to move forward with those purchases, we do need a whole.
So we have access from the lunch?
Mm-hmm.
Food?
Yes.
Stuff?
Yeah. So what's happened is, um, a lot of, a lot of places have been like through COVID had a lot of access when everybody was free. So you kind of had to spend down, but what's happening now is there's still, um, excess funds because we are, we have just received our fourth, uh, what's called supply chain assistance. And what that does is it's basically because of the increased cost, the, the federal government is, is giving you assistance, so to speak. And it has to be for non-processed foods for like your milk, your cheese and so forth. So I work with the Abby Group so that that will be spent down first. Um, and we have to account for that, the auditors that, that review us, take a look at it. Um, the state takes a look because they want to know you're spending it on non-processed. Um, and I work with Abby Group on that one to make sure that's instituted. We do have, um, the third round for last year that we're in the spend-down of now. That one has to be spent by September thirtieth of this year. The next one is September thirtieth of next year, but we're looking to do those spend downs. You get grants through that. You also have, um, in your, uh, food service, the government up, um, up the amount that you get for your categorically free or your application free, um, because of the increased costs. So the amount that is being paid to the districts for free indoor reduced students is higher. So when you're getting more money in, you've kind of got more sitting there. So, um, at the same time, they're like, well, you can't keep that much. You have to spend it. So we need new dishwashers badly, so this is the perfect time to be able to do something like that and get our equipment updated. Um, the amount of maintenance time spent on these is going to drop significantly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, you know, we're looking to, uh, spend down the excess funds. And so the first step in doing that is to, um, uh, send your spend-down plan to the Department of Education. I think we had to have it by mid to end of December.
Yeah.
Um, and so Dr. Ryan has to, um, get that sent in. We wait for approval. We just got that last week, so. Um, so we're looking to do the spend-down and, um, we're hoping it to be dishwashers because that's what we. We would be looking for the board to, um, entertain a motion to, um, accept the bids from central restaurant.
You want to make a motion and then have discussion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Discussion? You're ready? Any questions? So all those in favor of approving the votes?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So.
Very much. Sorry to get so long-winded on the line.
No, no, yeah, it's good to understand it.
No questions.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
And that concludes my report. If anybody has questions, feel free. That's why all of them is good.
Uh, Director of Personalized Learning.
Madam Chair, you have my report. Um, a couple of things, um, I want to point out that I didn't get in here. We just returned today from, um, we've, I feel like our students are getting out there and we had noticed all of it with Teresa's Beable students up at conference, which is beyond amazing.
Hmm.
Um, I, I feel like we have bred today from the people from Beable of this like thread that was just amazing with the people. Uh, Holly came from Nashville. She was the vice president and saleswoman and told us today in an email that it was her, um, best day of her career presenting.
Nice.
I had pictures from the superintendents that were there that met with our students.
Uh-huh.
So we were able to share those. They, they were jealous.
Yeah, we like it. That's nice.
Uh, that's okay. Um, and this afternoon, um, two, two seniors presented at Leadership in Adnoc. Um, we were invited. Catherine Lynch asked if we would go and, um, she asked if I would go and it's obviously a hundred times better when students go. So I took two students, um, two seniors went and spoke today to group Luca Perez, who's the head of chamber, um, ran the meeting and what it was, it was, um, I was telling Dr. Ryan that every time you lead, listen to students, you learn something more that you think you, you think you know it all and you've been in education for a long time. But when you hear students, you learn even more. So our students spoke to about, it was about thirty, um, young and upcoming, uh, business leaders in the, in the audience um, that are going through this leadership, uh, year-long sort of, um, program about how to, how to become leaders. And, um, well, we don't know, but they knocked it out of the park today. They were, you know, they were the last on the agenda. Um, and, uh, they just did a great job. So I was proud to be there and listen to our students speak then. So that was nice. Um, so we've had a lot of great things happening. Um, the SWOT analysis is in here. Um, I, I think one of the things that I found when, you know, you have the report, you have all the pieces in it. Um, sometimes when we went through this, there was a lot in it, right? And so to make progress on everything is impossible in one year, right? We knew that some of these things were going to take time and we're not there yet. We're not even close to being there. But in here shows some of the movement we have made and I think it was helpful, um, to have, it's, it's, it was important for us to have those special for teacher leader group so that they can see, um, sometimes they're, they're overwhelmed and busy and tired. And sometimes it's easy to see some of the things that are happening behind the scenes and in here are some of those things.
Mm-hmm.
And, and also in here are some of the things that they're the ones that are doing to make it happen for us. So, um, again, uh, there's places that we know we still have, we have work to do. Um, but that's part of our vision and our, and our strategic planning process. And, um, so the report's in front of you and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer or I'll let Dr. Ryan.
Yeah, there was a lot. It was nice actually to see it, you know, in one place. We talk about it a lot and in bits and pieces. It's nice to see it like here.
Yeah. And to be clear again, like, you know, I, I thank Dr. Ryan for being able to really point out these pieces because even for me, being part of every single one of these gets like a lot in my head. And, and, you know, to go through it step by step and to see, yeah, we've done a little bit of this, but we have more to go. And, and then that helps us refocus again. So. But, yeah.
Anybody have any question? Thanks for all the hard work. All right. Yeah, Principal's Report, Mr. Burr.
So you have my report and, uh, I just want to recognize, uh, Mr. Thurston for the, the, the band concert. Um, for our first try, it was well-attended. Um, I received a lot of positive feedback from parents. Um, one specific parent said, I just, uh, texted my, uh, daughter who was in band. She's forty years old now and she was, was happy to see the, the band coming back. Um, and that was a positive from a lot of parents. It's still a long way to go, but it was a really positive buzz there.
Nice to see the fruition that started with the way back with the theater program coming back into the high school and stuff. So then from elementary now into the high, the high school, so.
That's our goal to continue middle school, but then also let's, we've got that energy now to have it move into the high school. Um, one other thing that is not in my report is that tomorrow, myself, uh, Karen, Theresa D'Urio and Mr. Thurston are going. Are going to Wilton Lineboro. You know, Wilton Lineboro is six through twelve, about the same size of, of us and looking how they schedule.
Okay.
And, uh, and how they do the crossover of staffing and things like that. And, uh, so very interested to see how they do things, um, and during for their schedule. So any way we can improve our master schedule. So I'm looking forward to that.
You said at Wiltonboro?
Wilton Lineboro, yeah. Yeah.
So you did a, today was the day for the advi- and during advisory for the survey?
Yep.
Of the students?
We had.
Oh.
Oh.
We had a few technical difficulties.
Okay.
And we're going to continue it tomorrow.
Okay.
I mean, there's no fine constraint on it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, but there are a few glitches.
Right. We need to have a data gathering. We have time, but.
Right. We'll get it done.
That was a good reaction.
Can I go with you?
I'm excited to see results from all of that stuff. So it'll be, it'll be good. Any other, any questions for Mr. Burr?
Um, I just want to say Gina, I'll just pull you in. Gina and I were around in oh-nine when the, we, the indistinct instrumental feeder program was eliminated and then in twenty eighteen when the middle high school position was made full-time so that that position could then teach lessons for a few years at the elementary school and get it rolling. And then when it got put on hold at the elementary school, it had no lessons for a year and a half due to COVID. And now scheduling seems to be like the, well, first of all, the, you got kids who have had two solid, solid years of lessons now have come up. And scheduling was always, we were always getting pulled out of core classes in the middle school. And now it's seems to be, it's in that first period, right?
In that skill.
That skill set. It was more like the old Joe and Ruth Norton model where it was first period, you didn't have to be pulling them out of core classes. So it's kind of like the long fruition of almost twenty years since all that happened. And then it got brought back a decade later and finally now the elementary school is consistent and scheduling is a huge piece. So I'm glad to hear when you, I wrote it down when you said about going to Wilton Lineboro because scheduling was one of the things really not, was kill, is helping to not, because, you know, you can't be getting pulled out of all your core classes constantly. So, no, we're very, you know, you know, I've been a huge supporter. I don't care who's in the position, contrary to what some people think. Um, and, but I've been a huge ever since oh-nine of, of bringing it back and making things and having administrative support. And I feel like this year, finally, it's all gelled. That both buildings are supporting it. The schedule is supporting it. So, thank you. Very good to see. Yep.
Any other questions?
Kind of like Gina. You and I have been through a lot together. Fifteen years.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burr. Mr. Bogio.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I have my report. Happy to try and answer questions that may arise. The standardized testing.
I know, yeah.
I want to find out more.
Congrats, increases.
Isn't the map testing more valuable than the SAS? I mean, yeah, so that's the thing all these years, like this.
But SAS is only.
SAS is a summit test, so it's more like, and it's not diagnostic.
It, yeah.
The only thing that really helps is like looking at curriculum gaps maybe, you know, saying this is, we have to, if our kids are performing lowly, low in a certain area, we can say, why? Is that a gap in our curriculum?
You don't do that every year though.
So SAS, yeah.
But map testing's diagnostic on growth.
Yeah.
To the student growth, you can see.
So it's much more valuable.
Grow based on their goals that they set.
It's funny that they don't look at the ma- as students, the map as standardized testing, but they looked at the SAS as standardized test. You know, I mean, they made that distinction. It's just interesting that they made that distinction on their own.
It's all about accountability.
Yeah.
State level and the federal level. It's for years, ever since NEAP started way back in the early two thousands, right?
Yeah, no child left behind where every child really was behind the waves.
Well, and they see their growth with map testing too, and they always have a goal and if you're competitive, you want to beat it. And so I think that gives a little bit of.
And there's definitely some improvement from fall to winter, so that was.
Was there, wasn't math the big area, which is unusual for us. I feel like, well, that's a really good sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, it really brings up the third grade growth in math.
Yeah, that's check into.
Yeah.
And in first grade to have ninety about like that.
Especially if you start getting into the eighty, eighty-fifth percentile, it's really hard to make significant gains with that fifteen. But here in the thirty or fortieth, when you make significant.
Yeah.
There's some, you know, re-mannered. So to make a ten-point gain from first grade, um, that's tremendous, tremendous work.
I just have one thing, April. And I agree, Joe, um, with your quote here about bullying. That's the common sense way to look at bullying. Um, I don't want to say that the law's not common sense, but we've had bullying hearings and appeals have come to us. And, you know, there's, the Hampshire law is one of the strictest bullying laws in the country. And when things come to us, you know, well, it should be going, you should be looking at the same criteria all the way through. Because when it comes to us, we don't, when we, we've had to look at the law because otherwise if it got overturned at the state level, because the state's the next step from us. So this, this is common sense. What you say, this is, you know, how to look at bullying, but we have to just be aware that you need to follow what the law says and the law's super strict. And that I just wanted to make that comment that it's a combination of both because what normally you would think of bullying is not, I mean, it's not bullying. A lot of times it's under the law.
Hmm.
And then when things get appealed to us, that we would have, we used to have to, well, as we've had it, side by this is the law. So I just wanted to kind of point that out. I like your thing better than the actual state law about it, but. Yeah.
Anybody have anything else for Mr. Bogio?
Just the jump in referrals.
Hmm.
Any idea what's going on or kids are just ready for something to be asked?
Or break?
Yeah.
To be honest with you, I didn't have time to really dig into the, you know, what's going on or it's, it's data at this point that those questions, as time permits, can be answered, but I don't have the time.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Bogio. Director of Technology, Mr. Ario.
Madam Chair, you got my report. If you'd like to enter any questions.
Anybody have any?
Just shout out that you have here Connor works through a mountain of tickets from when the kids got their laptops back. So thanks to Connor for that. And, you know, of course, with like two a million times for saving us. But thank you, Justin. But, yeah, I'm sure that was very tedious for Connor to work that.
He actually left a, uh, with no active tickets.
Yeah.
For other things, but it's a huge accomplishment.
Wow.
Yeah, great. And are we, are we past the whole invasion thing that we, are we done with that yet or?
There's still an investigation going on as far as our infrastructure and our equipment. We're back up and running. I would say time, time presents, there's a little thing to pop up.
Right.
I haven't figured that out yet.
Great.
Once the investigation is completed, we'll get the results of that and then we'll be able to have a session with the board, walk through with, uh, our consultant attorneys and what have.
Hmm. Perfect. Thank you. All right, Board Business. District meeting discussion. So it. It's the second Saturday of March, yes? Yes. I really gotta put that in my calendar.
Yeah.
I know. I think the schedule says that we start at ten, otherwise, otherwise, other.
No, it's at the conclusion of ten or the conclusion of our meeting, whichever happens first, which is going to be, and I said whichever happens less.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they're going to still be going.
They go, they go to their, then we go, but.
Yeah.
Theoretically, if they're done before ten, we start in ten.
Yeah, if they're done at nine-thirty, we have to wait.
Yes.
For the.
For us, for the second one?
Well, when we start, yeah, but it's going to be a long one to the town.
I think it will be. And everybody will be there, right?
I haven't seen how it works.
No.
We technically don't need a forum because it's not our meeting. It's the legislative bodies meeting, so just behave.
No, no, it's not.
Once you get it in your calendar.
I will drive to your house and pick you up.
No, I want my flowers and.
Yeah.
Hard and everything, yeah. I waited fifteen years for flowers.
It's hard. Um. So we need to find a moderator. If anybody's got any ideas, reach out to them.
Yeah, that's a big one.
Yes. Um. We do have an interest party in our clerk position, so that's good. Do we do that in non-public first and then vote on it and just do it all in public?
Be public because if it were an election, it would be a public election.
Right.
Even when you file, that is a public.
Right.
Document that can be shared.
I just wasn't sure because, yeah, I wanted to make sure. I just wasn't sure, because, yeah, I wanted to make sure we were doing it, so we could probably do that now.
And who swears her in, because usually the moderator, can the town clerks swear her?
I would be willing to bet either the town clerk or the town administrator.
Okay.
Okay.
And she, I mean, our, our candidate for this clerk position is highly qualified.
Yes, highly.
Is clearly local.
Yes.
Like in his room.
And she's already done half the work already.
Yeah, she's already giving it, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
And she's already giving us advice.
Oh, so any board member, oh, yeah, you're right, yeah, of what, any man, yeah, say it's time.
Yeah, so we can just do that.
Yeah, afterwards, you can just give her the, give her the oath and sign it.
Perfect. So our candidate is Maria, if you hadn't figured out that yet.
Powers of protection.
Right, yes. Nobody else has come forward to want to do it. Maria's done half the work already. So, um, she's, she's willing to do it through town meeting, so, and, and then hopefully we'll have somebody either written in on ballots on Tuesday for next year or not. We'll figure that out.
That accepts it. Yeah, because you have to accept.
There was, um, I will throw it out there, there was some talk with Melissa Lowe about being the clerk. So I told her I was gonna write her name in, so, so if anybody would like to write her name in, write her name in, she can accept her decline.
See, I was gonna say, is Maria okay with doing it? Like, if you got written in, would you be okay with that too, or you just want it till?
Or you, or you don't have to answer that right now.
Either way.
Well, I've learned a lot, so, I've learned a lot about how to do it.
All right, so we have a letter, we need a motion to accept.
Um, I, I make a motion to appoint Maria as the district clerk through district meeting.
Well, second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Maria, you're it. Thank you so much.
I just wrote my notes, Maria Moderator, sorry. Luckily, my notes.
Didn't go that far.
My notes are not the official record.
Any more discussion that we need to have about the district meeting?
Um, not about district meeting, but, um, related, so election night, we need to get ballot counters, and none of us are on the ballot, so technically we could all do it.
Kendra said she would, they asked her at the last meeting.
And I will.
And I can.
I'll come down and vote and stay.
Yeah.
Oh, then I will stay home. Come on, counted plenty.
Okay.
And you can count next year.
Not always. No, sorry.
So Kayla, Kendra, Holly, and me will go down. Okay. Is that it for district meeting? Public budget hearing discussion. So I think we should have a forum. Um, it's scheduling it would be the issue.
Yep, between now and twelve, you wanna get that done?
Yes. So next week is vacation. The week after that, you're gone.
Wait, who's gone?
David.
Oh, I think you pointed at me.
No, no, no.
I'm like, I'm gone the week of vacation.
I mean, we could have it during vacation.
Oh, people won't.
Whatever, but, yeah, a lot of people are gone.
Enough time to plan it.
No.
And advertise it.
So then there's like the first week of March.
March sixth, which is a Wednesday.
Yeah.
People are used to Wednesday.
I'm free that day. Anybody else?
What time?
It'd be in the evening, because of people working and whatnot, we wanna try to get as many people that available, to be available as possible, so at six thirty maybe. It's my thought process, if that.
Yep.
That works.
And where?
The gym, we did it in the gym last time. And we've done it. We did the library a few years, and then when we expect more people, we've done it in the gym.
Okay, so we get it, if we get as many people as we did last year, then we should have it in the gym.
Yeah.
And at night, it'll be at six thirty, so if you have slides or something, you know, to do, then they should be visible.
Jody had the big screen.
Up on the stage.
Yeah.
And there's nothing going on in the gym on.
Thank you.
That's what, that was Diane's question.
I believe the tournaments for both boys and girls aren't done by then.
Yeah, Teresa will be.
Well, Teresa said yes, that.
Well, the first round's next week, but they'll, we wouldn't be hosting that far if we were to go after next week, we wouldn't be hosting here, at the other.
Other where.
And the play rehearsals, we're not gonna mess with them.
Yeah, I should go down there, yeah.
So I think we'll be good. Right, you know, if any of them.
No, no, yeah, sports, right, will be.
Tournament's done over the next couple of weeks.
Oh, nine games on Friday, so.
Yep.
It should be okay.
Oh, yeah, that's the eighth.
Um, for last year's, I know, um, and I can give you the information, but we did the every door direct mail mailing and Matt, and I created the flyer, Matt and I went and got picked, and picked up at Staples. We separated into bundles of whatever, based on the root fifty, and then we took it to the post office. Matt and I are not willing to do that this year, sorry. We did it last year all on our own, so I can give you information, I can help out with pieces, but I don't think, you know, Matt should do any of it.
No, I can, I can, I can.
But we did it all last year.
It's just like a postcard thing.
It was, no, it's a sheet, I can give you all the.
Full sheet, it's gotta be like card stuff.
Okay.
And I have all the information, so I can work with you on it.
Put the D show on it, the permanent number?
Not a permanent number, it's just C D D, but there was an M D show.
I got the whole deal, I got all the info from the postmaster, yeah, well, no, I did it one time for one, when I was running for election once, I did it for myself. But she helped me with the newest version and all, and all the roots, we, we packaged them by roots, it's.
I got it, I can help.
I mean, and it was what, maybe the whole deal, because we got a deal at Staples, we had a coupon, I think the whole thing was like one hundred, not even.
With the postage.
With the postage and everything, and all the mailers for every, so how many is it, like houses, two thousand?
About nineteen hundred.
Two thousand, yeah. So it was, so it's not super expensive, it's a, it's a cost, but it's not super expensive. Everybody did, we're gonna still do that. Yeah, okay, so you and I can get together, maybe I'll send you everything this weekend, and we can.
Yeah.
Meet and talk about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because we wanna get it in. When, when should we get it in the mail?
We should have it in the mail, let's see.
From away next week, but if we can talk about it beforehand, then get it.
You don't want it too early either, because then people forget.
So we're doing it on March sixth.
That's two, this page.
So you want it in the mail? Um.
So if we got it to the post, I was gonna say, if we got it to the post office by the twenty eighth, then we go out the twenty ninth pretty much.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll have that all, you'll have that ironed out before that.
Let me put that.
Because I'll help you get it ironed out before I go away.
Too soon, because people forget.
Right, yeah.
But we can get our ducks in a row and have it all ready to go before, because I'm gone all week next week.
Do we need a meeting to?
We, we used, we used to.
I mean, rather than just.
Right, I know, yeah.
Yeah, we.
I would rather not.
That's where I said, a couple of years ago, we even did role playing, I know, I had some eye rolls when I mentioned that last month, but it was helpful.
Well, I mean, we can meet, I'm looking at the wrong month, sorry. If we met, if we met that Monday. Or it could be
Which Monday?
The week before, like Monday, the twenty sixth.
Oh, the twenty sixth.
No, yeah, I'm sorry, that.
That week.
Yeah, yeah, that week of the twenty sixth, sorry, that's.
Oh, but you will be there.
Yeah, but you can do all the planning and such, because I, I have a small role in that, I'm available just for consulting, presentation.
Yeah.
So that's easy for me to, to pick up on.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you could meet and plan it without me for sure.
We could just do that for.
The what?
We could just do that for. And we have pusher of a learner. Do we still have pusher of a learner?
Yeah, that'll be a busy night, because we'll have all the data.
Yeah, so.
On the fourth or the.
That'll go right to six thirty.
Yeah, yeah, so we could stay, but that would get, you know, a pretty long.
Yeah. I mean, we can do it the week before, we can do it the week before.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a day that's better for anybody that week?
Good, anything?
I am leaving out of town on the twenty ninth, so.
Okay.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I'm fine.
So the Tuesday, I have in my calendar Personnel Committee at four thirty.
But do we even meet, we don't, we need to meet?
I don't, I don't know, do, do you have something for the Personnel Committee for this?
I do not.
Meeting?
I'd, I'd be okay with not, with not having that, since negotiations and stuff are over, if we didn't have any other thing.
Right, for now.
Really have any personnel so much, to know what our vacancies are, they're.
Right.
Yeah.
So, um, do you wanna do Tuesday, twenty seventh, is that a good thing?
Can we say it?
What's the earliest you guys can make it?
Pretty fast.
Same, um, I mean, would four thirty work? It's already in my calendar.
I have, it would be a little later, because it's just a little hard for me.
Five?
It'll be even like quarter of five, you know what I mean, because I'm coming.
Well, why don't we just say five, then, that way?
Let's just say five.
Okay, yeah, make it easy.
So I'm gonna say just five.
Yeah, those quarters, it's hard to remember.
I know.
I know, our meetings used to always be six, sixteen, so six is hard to remember.
Well, and I, I said to somebody yesterday, I'll have a board meeting tomorrow at six fifteen, and they went, no, I don't, it's six, it was six fifteen a long time ago. I was like, oh my god, it would have been late.
One.
Can here?
Yeah, I would assume here, the broom is available, I assume.
Well, who from the admin do we want? I'm Jane, obviously.
Jane, obviously.
Jane's gonna be doing most of the talking, because it's the money piece.
I would think Mr. Bogio. I think the principals.
You, you got, yeah, because you were all there the last few times, right?
Yeah. I wanna know, we, do we need any, I mean, does Karen need to be there for any part of the budget?
It would be helpful.
Yeah.
And Pat, if Patty could, because they might have.
Yeah, but definitely have question.
And Justin, why not? Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially if we're gonna plan on.
Oh, yeah, 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 thank you. You'll need to set it up.
Yeah.
We don't have a flower room.
Um, Sean Lee.
Yeah, so the eighteen.
Yeah, so whoever that is.
Have the whole eighteen there.
Yeah, he said.
Yeah, I think that'd be good, okay. Yeah, so if, if any of them wanna attend the planning of the meeting, the planning meeting. I don't think it would be, I don't think, I'm just saying if they want.
You're gonna be, basically, you're planning, are you just gonna be scripting out the program of how you're gonna present?
Yeah.
We can get last year's.
But the definitely.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Alright. Alright, anything else we need to talk about for that? And I'll certainly put something out on community connections and whatnot.
Yeah, we got the flyer, that's what we did last year, once we had the flyer.
Um, so we already did monitor and clerk, sorry, I jumped ahead on that one.
We were just so excited, Maria.
Um, school board evaluations. So that's another meeting.
I know, we did this last year, just.
And it got.
Because of the people going off the board.
Yes.
To have input, but.
That was my thought process.
Yeah, that's how, that's why we did it last year at this time.
Yeah, and it, we got, and it got circumvented.
Because the budget had to be cut after district meeting.
So this year, I feel like we could actually have one.
A real.
A real one, so I can actually see what it looks like.
And, and I had sent out the evaluation forms last time, I don't know if anybody has them, but if not, I can send it to you.
I died, it's buried.
Yeah, I'll send it to you.
Yeah.
And then you can send it out.
So we could. I'm wondering if that's something we could do after the planning, just to save an extra date, but that would, but it'd be an extra meetings.
Man, and Gina got another one today too.
I know, we heard about it, they're like, one more.
Gotta get them all in.
You're gone to twenty ninth through when?
Uh, just the weekend.
Okay.
So are we gonna try and do it after that planning?
We, we, we did it on a Sunday last year.
Yeah, I mean, we can do it whenever.
That's fine. You were there, right? No, oh, no, no, you weren't, but, no. Yeah, you, we, we had breakfast, like, we all brought like a pot, like breakfast. Yeah, we, yeah, we had it in the, for a change of ambiance, we had it in the high school library, but we don't necessarily need to do that, but, but, yeah, that's what we did, it was a Sunday morning. But it doesn't need to be a Sunday morning, it could be a, I don't wanna say Saturday morning, but it could be a Saturday morning, it could be.
No.
Mail counselor.
So, I mean, we could do it the first week of March, we could do it, you know, I mean, I can get the evaluations out, that way people have time.
And then get them back.
Get them back and. And do that, that works for everybody.
Till the third?
The week of the third is the first week of, both first week of March.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted to do it on a Sunday.
Yeah, do, we wanted to do it on Sundays, or.
Oh, that is.
Or during the week, I don't care when we do it, to be honest.
Yeah.
So we should be trying to do it the tenth, um.
Yeah.
Whatever works for everybody, I'm pretty flexible, so I don't really care.
Yeah.
I don't see anything on the tenth.
Okay. For the tenth.
Although, can we, do we need, technically, we, the board should, can't meet without the superintendent, but.
Oh, we don't wanna have.
We don't wanna have you come in on a Sunday.
So then.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
So the. Why? Um, is there any action?
No.
No.
Well, yeah, you're right, because it's just to do business, you have to have a superintendent, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll object, I mean, just like you can, but, yeah, we, we should look at that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, 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 because I had to look it up today at work, the Admiral says to have business. It's just a value, yeah.
Yeah.
It's like team building.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. What time? Eleven, ten, eleven, one.
I, when we did.
I think it was ten.
But it's also daylight saving.
Oh, my god.
So we should say eleven.
Wait a minute, and we, ahead, right? Oh, my god, eleven, eleven.
That's what I'm thinking, because it would really be.
Yeah, we got eleven.
Okay, so eleven.
Eleven.
Man.
Sunday, the tenth, at eleven. Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah.
We'll need to get in the building.
When's the wedding, then?
No, Joe, you're close.
Okay. Maria said she was gonna get me a key to get in, so I should be.
Who trusts us alone in, you give, because we're under your swipe, so who trusts us alone in the building now?
Okay, alright, it's fine, so that's done, yes. Superintendent search update. Superintendent search update, we're in the midst of interviews, so it's moving along, I don't think there's much else to say at this point about it.
When are we expecting?
We're hoping to be done with interviews this week, and then we'll figure it out from there, pretty much is what we're doing. Um, we did the approval of dishwashers already, so that's done, academic calendar.
I am going to ask the board pause on the calendar, uh, the way I had read the collective bargaining agreement, that, uh, both associations would have submitted suggestions for the calendar by December. The way I had read the collective bargaining agreement, that the both associations would have submitted suggestions for the calendar by December. Um, but in learning, working through that with both association representatives. Past practice has been that they're given the calendar, the draft calendar from administration. And some time to work on it and look at it and give it membership before it comes to the board. That's a past practice I was not aware of, so that's my understanding.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, we've talked, Ms. Giorgio and I have talked, and she's gonna share it with membership, and, uh, I, I. Just to read, I don't think asking the board to rule it on the fourteenth of March, it's still, it's too late. It might be a little later than what people ignore, you know, used to, I don't know how, when you typically have your, your calendar fill out.
We, we, on March, we approved the, you know, the graduation date, after snow days, so I think. Combining that in the same meeting with the calendar, what do you think? I don't think that anybody would have a problem with that, because I don't think people are zoned in on the calendar, you know what I mean?
Right. Families that may be looking towards next year's calendar, but for the most part, you guys always set graduation date in March. I don't even think that the, the calendar, you, sometimes you talk about the calendar in February, but like, Dr. Ryan had mentioned, we have always seen that kind of first.
Yeah.
Um, just, just for input, it's advisory thing, it's not a decision basing, but it's just for input. So I think it, it actually ties in pretty nicely, because I make it public at the same time.
Exactly, that's what I'm thinking, and my, and my, you know, my first question, and you all know this, is, has, has the union seen this? Is every, every year for fifteen years is my first question, has the union seen this? So, yeah.
So the answer to that person is yes. And what you have in front of you has actually been draft, redrafted this morning with the eighteen. And so we've, we've put together, so Maria, did we give them an updated draft on?
This is the one from my packet, so no.
Okay, so even better, so what we'll do is, is the association has the one that the A-team redrafted this morning with a couple of changes. The associations will get back to us, but their suggested edits, we'll consider and we'll bring to the board, and that way we'll have, you'll have a fresh look at it.
So we'll push this off till March, meeting, yes.
Yep.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
And so noted, moving forward, we've already talked about, there's an item, the, the negotiate with the bargaining table, it's.
Yeah.
In that, and clean it up, so it's here, and, um, you did have a process.
And I think in the past, we've tried to clean up a lot of that language, but it's just been that, like.
It's still not clear.
Yeah, yeah, so, and maybe when David, well, it says here, I'm like, oh, yeah, that's just not what we've done, so that. Since we're gonna be entering negotiations next year, to kind of clean up some of those more language pieces, I think would be helpful for everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially any new people coming in.
Exactly.
Very confusing, because people don't know tradition.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and especially like, as, you know, there's gonna be a lot leaving on, on this end, so, you know, and there's a lot new people at the S A U, so, yeah. That'll be good, and stuff you don't even think of when you're so used to, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, just do it, yeah, you just do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Any other business? No? Do we need any of our admin for our committee reports? I don't.
My, my only one with, with the, the principles are on this policy, and it got canceled on a snow day, and then everything's been crazy with budget, so I need to get back and get to you guys and cancel it. Yeah, has the, have the students, uh, leadership teams or whoever it was, have they looked at anything?
They have.
Okay, cool, so that, that will have something to look at that, then, alright, so I'll, I'll send out an email, I meant to do it before, but it's just been so crazy with the budget, so.
Guys can see, the next time that you do your policy review, people just let me know, maybe like a week or so in advance. And that way I'll make sure that I hold a student council meeting ahead of time, because we've been meeting, we've been examining.
Other ones.
Codes in the area, we've been talking to different kids, they've been talking to kids, so, I know that one policy is one thing that we were.
Yeah, that's the one that we're looking at right now, and then I have put together a whole review of all of our policies that need updating and what's by law, so I can throw that in the drive, went, the drive. I, we use Google at work, I'm sorry, in the team folder, in the team. Yeah, in the teams folder, um, and, and if we're ongoing, that you guys, the Polish committee can do after I'm off the board, and you can, it's all laid out by law, because we're pretty behind. We got, um, pretty behind during COVID, there's more important things, and just catching up, there's things, the annual things that we haven't really looked up on that we need to. But, um, yeah, and if you could maybe let Mr. Barth know, um, what other ones you've looked at, and I can pull those and throw them in the teams. Yeah, and if, if you wanna let me know, I can throw it in the folder, like, pull them or something, just so we have the same ones to look at.
Okay.
Yeah, cool, alright, so, yeah, we'll look, schedule a meeting, and we'll let you know for sure. Thank you, Teresa.
That was very helpful.
Alright, does any other committees need any of the admin? I think so, I don't have any. Alright, if they'd like to go. Thank you for all your hard work. Oh, yeah, vacation, I'm not doing anything, so it's not even on my radar, that is.
There's Winter Carnival in Broadwell, if she's interested in any of that.
Well, now, Helen's planning on things like.
Is she home?
So our first committee report is behavioral support team.
Alright, so we met in June, I wrote one eighteen.
It was, yeah, it was.
Okay, I was like, I wrote one eighteen, it was, sorry. I did write the wrong year. Um, so Sarah has been doing a ton of work with staff and the leadership team. The S E L leadership team is meeting monthly, and that's been super helpful for her. Um, she's been working a lot on training staff, which has been super effective, and her mindset is kind of meeting them where they are, just like we talk about during with students. Um, a big theme was connection before correction. And it is suicide prevention for the next two months of their staff meeting, that's a requirement, so. She had the S E L leadership team help plan for that too. Um, middle, high school, just discussion about making advisory more effective. And the kindness, is it kindness one oh one? Yeah, the kindness one oh one, and, um, you know, just needing regulation to happen. So that kindness can kind of be a priority. And just talking, we have the Acer person, and that has been in the works forever, and now there. Someone is in the building Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, so that is, should be helpful with some of the trauma stuff for families. And I think that was pretty much. It.
Probably quite a bit.
Yeah, it was, I wrote a lot of notes.
It's great.
Yeah.
Any questions for Kayla? Uh, budget committee, we are, we set up our forum, so that was on my agenda. And, yeah, moving forward. Community connections, we're posting. Oh, that's what I meant to ask Joe, sorry, I forgot, I had gotten some pictures of some kids doing some dentistry stuff.
Yeah, what was that for?
And I, it wasn't clear whether they were learning about dentistry, or they were learning about keeping their, if it was part of the Cheshire Smiles. Program that they were doing, I wasn't sure, yeah, so it's, I wasn't, I wanted to post it on community connections, but I needed a little more clarification before I did anything with it, and I forgot to ask them tonight, so I meant to. Did when I asked, I said, I don't know. Yeah, maybe just a reminder for us, because I would love to post it onto community connections, it was, there's some cute pictures. Alright, uh, facilities, we meet on three nineteen. Is our next meeting, so there's nothing new there. Pass, I didn't make the last meeting, but I think we're meeting in. I wanna say April, but I'm not sure, I don't know for sure. Legislation, Holly.
Um, I didn't pull anything specific, there's just so much, um, but you guys get the emails from N H S B A, there's like a hundred and ninety or whatever bills. Working their way through on various degrees of will pass, that's crazy, that's a good one, so, you know, um, there's some really wild ones out there, um, uh, N H S B A, next week, I'm going to Dallas for a COSPA conference. It's the, for part of the national stuff, so, um, I can probably bring some interesting things back from that. Um, other than that, oh, and then in March, I'm going to an N H S B A conference in London, but. I'll send anything good, I'll send back from there, but it's more of like a women's type focused conference, so that might be, that's as well.
Yeah.
For now, the board is all over.
Yeah.
But, um, so, yeah, that's pretty much it.
So I, personnel is next, and I have that at two twenty seven, but we're changing that now, so. That'll be a different meeting. Uh, policy committee, you guys already talked about that, selectmen. I haven't been to any recent meetings, and Kendra's not here, staff development, anything there?
Because we haven't met, and I know she's got, she's planning and has things in the. I don't think I have a meeting scheduled for that, so.
But you're working on the master plan, right, or is that this year, right?
This is the year, yeah, we're in the first year of extension.
So that'll gear up probably soon, yeah, after, yeah.
Well, and I, some of that, I know, is she's doing with like the portrait of a learner, she's kind of planning.
The other years, when, when I've been on it with the master plan, everybody took a piece of the plan, you know, you're like in a team of like two, and you and, and you updated it and did stuff, then you all came back together, so, you know, that's gonna be a big project, and a crunch once it starts, if it hasn't, yeah.
So I'll have to, you know.
Alright, and superintendent, we already talked about, Jewish exploratory committee. You guys have a man. And wellness.
We just met today.
Just met. We have a new chair, who's the, that's Jane.
No, we did talk about how usually it's whoever doesn't show up.
We didn't do that this time.
Because we actually, we have like so much work that we need to do.
Yeah, yeah.
That we really.
Everything was everywhere.
I know, but you had it along, and you have so many plans, Jane's gonna get us right on track.
We have another meeting scheduled for March thirteen.
Thirteenth, because it's our last meeting.
We're feeding it.
Yeah.
One of the things we did discuss was bringing our wellness plan, or wellness policy to the students, to help them take a look at.
And maybe having them on the committee, right?
And that was talked about, I used to be on it for a number of years, I know that was, had been talked about before.
Yeah, we're gonna put an announcement out again to see if there are any students.
I asked one question, just because I was part of bonus for so long, we used to have like the district wellness policy. And then there is a school board wellness policy, and then there is a student handbook. How do all of those things jive, I mean, as a, as a teacher, how do all of those things jive? Because on our district wellness policy, we were really specific about certain things in terms of like coffee and energy drinks, and all of these different things, and even the lunch program, you look at the school board policy, it references some of those, but not to the specific details. Or in our handbook on page like forty seven, it mentions specific things, but I think it gets confusing, because like, what, there's three different things saying different things that are all the same thing. And, I don't know how to say it better.
A lot of the school board piece is by law, like, different things are asked to be by law, so, yeah.
Get the policies from usually the.
Right, yeah, exactly, and all that, yeah.
Make a few things or whatever, you adopt them, and then at the school district, we have the overall wellness policy. But then each school also might have their own.
Is it more like administrative procedures? Was that, each school has like a procedure, or is it an?
Just, just something to think about, and I know, like, right now, it's, it seems like there's three different documents that are written, and people are like, oh, which one do we follow?
Ambiguity around the food and where, and, and like fundraising, we were like.
And I did that for years, I mean, there are some times, just since you guys are down, I mean, I know you haven't met.
We're digging into it.
So, yeah, yeah, just to kind of, not to interrupt.
We should have all of those documents at the meeting, just so we can kind of try and streamline and get them all on the thing.
Great. Anything else with that, they could?
No.
Alright, citizens comments, is there anybody in the audience that has anything?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Um, so I know that you guys are doing the portrait of the learner work, and I know that we were attempting to do the survey today. And we will continue to get that done by the end of the week, and I know in some of the discussions that I've had with some people on the committee, and also in our faculty meeting, we were talking about how do we get that survey, um, more broadcasted? Um, because I know when I was talking with Carolyn Eastman, I think it was last year, when she came to start the initial, we were talking about other Nashua, other districts that have done this. And it seemed like it was a huge community effort in making sure that everybody has input.
Yep.
And the way it was kind of discussed was like, oh, if you know somebody who wants to, like, um, participate in a survey. You can give them the link, well, I would like that survey to go broadly out.
Yeah, no, that was my, that was my thought.
Laundry list of like every, it's a huge list of who it's going to, including, you know, police, fire. Um, the community center, our senior senators with like meals on wheels, and business owners, and um, getting Catherine to help us get it, you know, to townspeople, we have, um, parents. There's, we have a huge list.
So if you're looking at possibly doing a flyer before the budget, can the tiny URL go on that flyer, and that goes out to everybody? So it's like one mailing, and then everyone has access to the surveys, so we get more input from people, because not everybody has Facebook. Not every, and not everyone checks their mail. Um, but if there's a way to broadcast that, because I'm really looking for a portrait of a learner, and what we want our Hinsdale students to be able to be capable of. We want to be able to hear from all stakeholders, not just the people.
That is one of our goals, is to hear from the people we don't typically hear from, and I range from our, you know, younger people all the way up to, you know, our oldest community members. So we have, I think, my, yeah.
And I missed the last.
Notes are in my other one, we have a huge, huge, huge list. That was actually, we broke out into groups, and that was our focus on who, who we want, and how can we get it to them? So, there was, it was like a discussion if you knew someone to put them in, but that's part of like a bigger, broader, and.
I would, personally, and it's, it's just me, I'd love to see it go out to every resident, and whoever participates, participates, because
Yep.
You're not, yeah, you, you can reach out to physical mountain trail riders.
Yep, they're actually on the list. They're on the list.
But that's, that's a small group of people, and how many other people are they going to add, so if there's a way to get it out to.
I think that's a great idea, is to, to get it on the E D D M, and just kind of, you know, let the public know, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I can get that from Karen, and just, like, just in a corner, just a diff, like, you know, oh, also, also this, you know.
Or just a little tiny URL.
Yeah, I wonder if she has a QR code, because that would be.
Doing both would be. Because I, like, my grandmother would be like, what's a QR?
I would just say, we really would want to on the flyer, I don't, I'm just afraid we're gonna conflate the budget presentation, and so it would just have to be very distinct. Give us input on whatever, whatever you wanna say, but I would just be really specific.
Sorry, my question was gonna be like, I know that, wi- within that portrait of a learner, there, there's gonna be a whole community piece, was that, is that something that's? Right, because I get what Teresa's saying, but is that something that's in the plan of, like, we did, we did teachers and staff, and then we're gonna do, like, students, and then we're gonna do community next, yeah, 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 so I'm wondering if it's, if it's something that's you guys are planning on, that's coming up?
But she wants to have, I believe she's trying to have like school data by our meeting in March.
Right.
So then, community data would be.
After that.
And, and I thought, unless it changed, because like I said, I missed the, the last meeting or so, but the, they were gonna report to the school board at the main meeting, so they wanted to have stuff wrapped up in May, or did that gets pushed?
I don't know if, we haven't discussed.
Oh, okay, alright, so, yeah.
Specifically discussed, and I missed the meeting you were at, so. It sounds like that's probably still the plan then, if it hasn't been said otherwise.
And I have a couple of other, other questions real quick, um, Jane, I know you mentioned about the, the spend down. So my question about that, and I, I know that we need equipment, but we're in a district where we often have unpaid lunch bills.
I'm right on it.
Okay, that was your question, because often we have to somehow absorb that cost, and in certain way that we can.
Except when they said you can't.
My other question was, I have, um, some sixth grade students who keep checking our school website to look at the December meeting. Because they presented the December meeting, and that's not on our website.
I think we got lost in the hat.
That's what I was thinking.
Yes. Yes, because it was, it was, I know, it was, it really stunk, but.
Cause the hack was the next morning.
It was, yeah, it literally. Well, guys, I think it just hasn't been posted because of the hack and we haven't had time.
Yeah, I got the, it got lost. Cause I think I, I think one of us asked about, yeah, yeah. Asked about the posting for the meeting and Justin's reply was that it got, it's gone. Unfortunately. Yeah, I know.
My only other question is because I know that Maria had offered to be clerk, if you guys had mentioned that. If we don't have a town moderator, does that make Maria clerk? How does that work?
I'm looking into it.
Yeah.
Cause it's our question. We don't know that answer. We have to have a moderator to have a meeting. We know that part.
No, I'm just trying to like.
Yeah, no.
Understand the process.
We're just like, no.
Cause I, I had to talk to Secretary of State's office this morning for work, about my job, because it was in the same situation. And, yeah, you can't have a meeting without a moderator.
Correct.
At all. And, yeah, and the clerk does, can act as the moderator if there is a moderator, but I don't think you can force the clerk. That's what.
We wouldn't want to do that.
Cause then you can't, cause you'd have to do both. I don't know how you would do both.
Somebody else would have to take now.
One then come in and do clerk, because we can't take minutes.
Somebody else would have to. We'd have to sign somebody's notes.
Somebody else would just take the minutes and you would just test to them, ask the clerk that they were the copy of the minutes. Um, but somebody else could take them.
We're going to try. However you need.
Find a moderator. That would be very helpful.
We're going to try and.
Yeah, so if anybody knows anybody who might be interested in being our moderator for the school board of the town meeting, we would greatly appreciate them reaching out.
I'm not great.
I know.
No, you, no, you can be ma-
Oh, stop fighting.
You can be clerk, but moderator might be incompatible. But we will look into that. And not just for, not just for you, honestly, there might be somebody in, in the district who might be okay, but moderator might be an incompatible office. I'm not sure a clerk isn't, but moderator would.
You have to be impartial.
Treasurer is incompatible, I think, but.
Well, the legislative body votes on the moderator's rules. They can change rules, so that's a check and balance.
Yeah, but you know, I don't know for sure what's incompatible, you know, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I, I know we've been trying to get Sholman, but he's on the budget committee and that is incompatible.
Even with for school.
Well, yeah, because he's.
Yeah, cause you.
Yeah, cause there need votes on both. That would be like having a school board member being the moderator. Cause the, he's the budget committee vote, yeah. No more budget committees. He needs to be moderator.
All right. Any other comments from the, from the?
Can, can I ask a question?
Sure, that's what it's for.
Um, cause I'm late to the party as always. Um, what, what was the reasoning behind? Or what is the reasoning behind switching some of our kids to being protect or being first to us?
It's, you know, it's cheaper for us to send our kids a lot, quite a bit. Like half, yeah, more than half. Yeah.
Yeah.
Because they did this before and kids started out using it and then they died off because they didn't want to get up to go over it.
That's part of, they don't have to.
They don't have to anymore.
Cause they start later.
They offer more.
Yeah.
So they can go later now. They'll come to school first.
Yeah.
Cause I did it when it was six AM.
Me too.
Yeah, my sister didn't do it.
It was awful. I did it.
We had a blast, but for different reasons.
Right. But now it is later and they have more to offer than when they've done.
Yeah.
Okay. So it just really, it's like the treadmill.
Yeah.
Um, the other question I have is the behavioral stuff. I heard you talk about the elementary school. What's going on in the high school?
You mean the numbers that, when we were talking about? Yeah.
We haven't.
We haven't gotten any from.
We get, we're getting them quarterly. So that should be coming soon from the high school. Yeah, in March, we'll get those.
We have requested those, so we'll have those.
We, we used to get them every month. So, yeah, I, I agree with you. Yeah.
My other concern is that we don't have, uh, for behavioral reasons and other reasons. We, we have probably three substitute teachers that they can use. And like the, just point of information to everybody, for last week, for two days, I think there were between nine and ten people out. And kids were going to study hall.
Yeah, that's right.
And doing nothing. Two days, three days in a row. So that's, that's not educating our kids. I mean, I, I hear us talk about all this other stuff. What about the, the nitty gritty of them in a classroom, sitting at a desk, educating them? Not having. That's a major, big problem. And again, I'm going to say the behavioral, because I have kids that just sit there with their head down and refuse to do anything. Not educated. I would say, oh, and, oh, good positive thing. And not a positive, no, right? Um, I think we should have, um, you guys talked about having pictures of stuff for the kids doing presentations. What about having that at the vote, at the, when we vote?
Oh, like a collage and stuff?
Such a good idea.
We've had the kids at different town meetings do things before the meeting starts and whatnot, which would be great.
Yeah, like a slideshow.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we.
These fabulous kids.
Yeah, that's. We have pictures of kids. Yeah. Yeah, and we just, we need to, you know, administration, we just need to make sure that there are kids that were allowed. And, and we have plenty of stuff we put on Twitter and right, you know, you can just pull.
Well, and teachers have, usually have a list of who can and can't, yeah. Especially like with all this.
You could have all this there.
Right.
See the stuff what the kids are doing. All the positive stuff that's coming out of it.
That is a great idea.
Thank you. Anybody else? Is there anybody online that has any comments?
Yes, please. Hey, how you doing? Um, so my question is kind of going off on, I'm not sure who spoke after Teresa just now, but, um, I do have questions about the behavioral. Um, I was wondering about when Joe said, was it two hundred and something? I feel like it was in the two hundreds, um.
Eighty one.
Was it?
Eighty one for quarter two.
Okay, I thought I heard two hundred something. I was like, whoa.
Quarter, quarter two was.
Okay, so that is probably, okay, so I, I know he said, I know he's not there. Um, I know he said he hadn't analyzed the data yet. Um, I was wondering, first of all, is that something that he's going to, and he probably, I'm sure is already, but I'm just curious. Is he reviewing that before school district meeting? So, you know, there's, I guess, I'm, I'm wondering this. Would that kind of support, um, I understand there's a warrant article for behavioral interventionist. So I was just wondering about having that, um, information to support that.
That's really good point.
Good connection.
Yeah.
That'll help us with our, um, the budget forum. We can make sure Joe gets, and John gets us information to support that.
And he does have some of the aggressive data. So if we can combine the referrals and that.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I, I work with little kids that are behavioral as well now. So not to mention, I have kids of my own. So. So, yeah, so I was wondering now, and I guess the other question I was thinking or wondering about is, um, as far as the behavioral interventionist position goes, well, he, first of all, that's a warrant article. Is that going to be discussed at the district meeting? I was confused whether it goes on the ballot, you know, on the twelfth, or will that be at the meeting on the sixteenth to be discussed live?
Yeah. No, it'll be in the meeting.
Okay, great. Um, cause I know that, that's kind of a broad term. So I don't know, you know, are we looking or is the district looking for someone who is the board certified person? Are you looking? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Cause I know the registered, the RBTs need a supervisor. So then you get into that too. Um, but so, so that warrant article will have a set salary kind of stated there to be voted on.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
Bachelor's degree.
Right?
Yeah.
The salary is right on the.
Salary is on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I guess my last part, I, I think to that, to follow up on that is as far as supporting that being on the, um, or at being voted on and hopefully voted in, um, is, you know, the cost, you know, the salary and how does that offset, um, the possible, you know, I know, I know this comes up, I feel like every year. But how much it costs to send a student out of district? Um, you know, because we don't have the staff available to support, you know, certain students. So how, you know, I'm just wondering about how that would play out in numbers or if someone says, well, you know, we don't need this position. And then, you know, at the school board, you know, could say, well, actually we do, and this could save the cost. We have so and so, you know, uh, we're spending this much money and sending kids out of district because we don't have the staff to support them behaviorally or, you know, the potential savings. I guess it's just what I'm wondering about there.
We'll have that available, yeah. Joe, Joe will be able to talk through that, but it's not a direct correlation to students who are identified uh, under student services who are suffering out of disreplacement as opposed to students who need behavior intervention.
Right.
The behavior intervention is not a special educator. So it's, it, it's not apples and oranges. It did not really correlate. What I can say is that the cost of the behavior interventionist will be far less proactively over time.
That's what I mean. Yeah. Exactly. I, I know they're not, I mean, yes, you could have behaviors from students that are special ed and certainly plenty that are not. So, so, yeah, I wasn't confusing the special ed question, just more, you know, cause I know there are students that go, you know, get placed elsewhere because of behaviors. Um, so that's more of the, you know, cost I was wondering about to offset there. But I guess I was throwing that out there, but, um, all right, that's it. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Is anybody else? I see there's somebody else on.
Hi, Donna.
Hi, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
What would a meeting be without Donna? In person around there.
Yeah. All right. Community queen.
Yeah, so, uh, can you guys, we need a motion to go into non-public? Yeah.
We'll make the motion to go into non-public.
Second.
Yes, roll call, yes. Everybody's, yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thanks. Let me know what, um, non-public.